adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided in a notice of January 28, 2020. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education Officers mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, sent to the tap into Nutley, advertised in the Nutley Sun on February 6, 2020 and posted on the district website. A revised meeting notice was sent on July 23, 2020, advertising this meeting was a virtual online meeting. Have the flag salute please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have the roll call Mr. DePisa, please.
Mr. Carnesella. Mrs. Dancheck Martin.
Here.
Mr. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Quirk. Mr. Riley. Mr. Scolera.
Ms. Zaro.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here. You heard Mr. Riley was here too. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed to close the executive session at this time to discuss litigation. Being further resolved that the results of this discussion would be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. We will probably be in closed session, I would think, for at least a half hour, maybe a little bit longer. But our board representative, our board member Erica Zaro will check in with the public if we go past that half hour time to let you know how much longer will be. Thank you. We're now in closed session. We're going to our other link, correct? Erica, let me know when you see them all, will you please?
I got you.
Charlie, can you hear me? Because I can't get my mic off.
I hear you Fred. I hear you in my sleep.
I can't mute it for... Yeah, but I can't mute it for some reason.
That would be a shame Fred. Go back, go out and come back in again. Mr. Riley, are you with us? Mr. Carnesella.
I am here.
Thank you.
Danny is not here yet.
Mr. Dancheck Martin.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. DeMayo.
I'm here.
Let me know when everybody's here except Mr.
Except who?
Danny.
Gotcha. Fred's bad. I think we're good except Danny.
Okay, Danny said he might have to bow out, so we'll move on.
We're good.
Okay. We, before we go into our correspondence, I did want to have a moment of silence for two friends of our board that we just lost recently. Mr. Robert Hess, the father of Janine Loconsola, and Mr. Jack Sufferin, who was a longstanding teacher in Nutley, outstanding wrestling coach, outstanding teacher, two good people that we lost recently. I'd like a moment of silence and for everyone else that is dealing with difficult times right now. Thank you. Thank you. Now we'll have some correspondence. Mr. DePisa.
No correspondence.
Glazer? Correspondence?
I have no correspondence.
Okay. I need approval of minutes, please.
Approval of minutes?
Thank you. Tennis report, Dr. Glazer.
There you go. There's my unmuted. Good evening, everybody. At the last Board of Education meeting on November 9, the Board approved a third-party vendor, Right at School, to provide childcare services. We held a virtual parent forum on Thursday, November 19th, to introduce Right at Schools and to give an overview of their academic and enrichment offerings, the variety of different options, and all of those were equally about $6 an hour, as well as their plan for a startup where they would have locations in the district, all of which are dependent on enrollment. And just so everybody knows, we are prepared to offer their programs in all five elementary schools, but that is based on enrollment. So since announcing our intent to partner with a third-party vendor, we've answered a number of questions as to why. Why go outside of the district? Why raise the cost? Why can't we, you know, go back to the emergency childcare that we put into place for the beginning of this school year? As we shared, when we started to phase out the program and when we started to face staff and students back into the building, staffing became a significant issue. We simply couldn't staff the program. Additionally, right at the same time that we were phasing out our emergency childcare program and researching third-party vendors, probably the third week in October, Mrs. Greisback, who is our administrator for the extended day program, found a New Jersey Department of Education new frequently asked question document that was intended to update remote learning. And in that document, it said that districts with an existing before-after-care program can continue to operate that program. Under Executive Order 175, and that is the original order of the governor back in March that closed us, we were not to offer other childcare programs, first of all. And then in this October guidance that we received, districts were not to offer childcare during the school day. The districts that were looking to offer childcare during the school day had to do that by partnering with a childcare provider licensed by the Department of Children and Family Services. So as we continued our research, we did find out that, you know, because our facility and space had been certified as meeting the health and safety standards that were set forth, that the district was able to use that space. We were able to monitor our remote learning for students under the supervision of our district-employed staff and under the conditions and the criteria that we already had. We had changed those criteria, right? We created this emergency program that was slightly different. Among the other frequently asked questions was a question with the state subsidies, and it did state that school districts may not charge a fee to families to provide a childcare service during the school day. So fortunately, we were already moving to partner with a licensed childcare provider to offer services during the day. Our schools were already open in person for staff, special education, and English language learning students. So the only remaining issue that we had with the new guidance that we found was charging for the emergency childcare program. And I am here to tell the community and those families that participated in that emergency program that the Board of Education is going to be refunding the fees that you paid for that program. Moving forward, obviously, we do have to continue if we're offering childcare to follow that updated guidance. And I would say to you, for those of you that are looking for a childcare option, I encourage you to look at what we're bringing to the district, the Right at School program. They're going to be following our district's safety and wellness regimen. They already implement social emotional supports and effect in response to the effects of remote learning, having to isolate, shelter in place. They have a strong academic curriculum in place to address learning loss that does include tutoring, it does include enrichment. They will follow our scheduled virtual learning and when we return, hybrid learning. They also provide opportunities to help kids navigate this kind of new normal school life. Even though we're social distance, even though capacity will be limited, they do offer daily enrichment activities. They have running around activities. They have lots of opportunities for students to socialize and be still socially distanced. Additionally, they're offering the most flexible enrollment plan that I have ever seen from any of the vendors we looked at. They're offering either a one-day, all the way up to a full five-day enrollment plan, half-days, full-days, a combination. They have a variety also of flexible drop-in options down the road tied to our electronic screening. So anybody who needs service, including our teachers and staff, should be able to be covered through this third-party provider. And they will be, they are licensed. They'll be licensed for Nutley within a week or so. They did a wonderful job in their virtual parent forum. They answered every question that came their way. They have offered to host another one if there are additional families that perhaps missed Thursday night and still have questions. We'd be happy to host that if community members let us know. And we also will be putting their flyer and PowerPoint up on our website as registration opens. So I wanted to make sure I shared that with everybody and made our existing childcare families know what the upcoming situation is. And just finally, as we enter the holiday season, I, you know, hope that every single person is able to find some ways to celebrate. I know that Thanksgiving is going to look differently. We might not all be with our family and friends. We might not be able to do the things that we usually do. But please enjoy the holiday, some much-needed time off, some downtime. I do hope you're able to share your time with somebody, maybe in small, safe groups. But I encourage you, please, continue to wear your masks, social distance, stay home if you're not feeling well. It's not worth going out for a Thanksgiving dinner. As I look forward to celebrating my fifth Thanksgiving in Nutley, which I can't believe, I'm grateful for a Board of Education that acts in the best interest of staff, students, and the community, a staff that works longer than expected and harder than any of us ever believed possible, and students and families that are engaged, flexible, and supportive. Please know that I do count each of you among all of my many blessings. Thank you, Mr. Kozinski.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. And again, I'm sure we all feel the same way. Try to do the best you can on this tumultuous Thanksgiving time of the year for all of us. Be safe, be healthy, and we'll move on to our secretary's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. The budget process has started. Meetings with the stakeholders of the principals, coordinators, and committees have started. I feel confident that the process will be fruitful and transparent. Bring your attention to number 11 on the finance committee agenda. The SOA for CUSAC facility checklists is being approved tonight. That goes to the county office, to the county business administrator, which basically does not start the process for CUSAC, but is involved in the CUSAC process. Thank you, Mr. Perigi, for completing the checklists. Thank you to Lorraine Butler and Nancy Cunningham for processing the school bucks refunds in a timely manner to all the families that have requested them. They're actually processing them weekly for us, so the people get their money back in a timely fashion. Again, thank you to Mr. Perigi, Mr. Costa, and Mr. Faris for all they're doing with the Buildings and Grounds and Maintenance Department to keep our buildings safe and healthy for everyone that is involved on a daily basis in going in and out of those buildings. Thank you to the entire board for their continued hard work and support and the committees and all of their hard work, volunteers. You couldn't pay enough per hour for their time and effort on a monthly basis. And happy and healthy Thanksgiving to all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DePisa. Mr. Perigi.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ductwork for the Frankl Middle School HVA system has been completed. We needed to replace four 48x48 draft, backdraft dampers and four sets of turning veins. The system is up and running and completed. The Spring Garden HVAC unit for the gym had a gas leak. We called in advanced mechanical services. They found a bad pilot tube. The unit was repaired and back in services. There was no issues with the gas. We have had, we have a bad heat exchanger at the elementary school gym unit. The parts are on order and will be replaced when they come in. The grounds crew is working on fall cleanups. Timmy and his crew will be assisting the town with the decorating of Park Oval. The shade tree, again, helped us with the Walker Middle School removing two hanging branches and trimming dead branches from the two trees in front of the school. Again, thank you. Admiral Air replaced the HVA systems at the John Walker Middle School and Natty's office. The unit is back in service. The ground, the custodial staff continues to clean and sanitize and are following the new protocols we have in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perigi. I'm having trouble getting on to my agenda, so I think the next thing we have on the agenda is committee reports, right, Mr. DePisa? Okay, committee reports. Mr. Frisco?
Charlie broke up. Did you say me?
Yes, I did.
The administrative committee met on November 12th. Present was Mr. Carnesella, Mr. Riley, myself, Dr. Glazer, Mr. Bagna, and Mr. DePisa. Mr. DePisa discussed his vision for the position of assistant business manager position and reviewed the interview process, and that will be on the agenda tonight. Mr. DePisa and Dr. Glazer detailed the budget development process that has begun with the meetings with the principals, directors, and coordinators. Mr. DePisa gave an update on the auditorium insurance claim. Dr. Glazer provided an update on the annual facilities checklist process. Mr. Perigi and building principals complete the checklist and identify necessary repairs and their capital work that needs to be completed. Dr. Glazer was certified to complete a checklist to the county. That would be combined of our CUSAC process in February. Mr. Bagna collaborated on CUSAC planning process and upcoming meeting with the Essex County Superintendent to prepare for the review. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Bagna shared updated information on the emergency childcare program guidance from the Department of Education. They further validated the need for a licensed third-party provider to offer these services. On November 19th, there was a virtual parent forum. We're right at school answers community members' questions and highlighted the program. Dr. Glazer provided COVID-19 updates, including the pilot of thermal scanners to take staff temperatures. The scanners were provided by Mayor Tucci and Frank DeMayo. Currently, the scanners are being piloted at Nutley High School. They will be in use at the entrances to the Oval for the November 28 football game against Belleville. Dr. Glazer also provided legal and personnel updates. And Mr. Bagna shared the social emotional learning rollout, including professional development, schedule, material deployment, and instructional approach. And the next meeting, the administration committee, will be on Tuesday, December 16th at 6:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Scolera. Mr. Bagna, have we set up a date yet for that CUSAC meeting?
We're still working with the county office to set up a date. We're targeting the second week in December, either that Wednesday or Thursday. We're trying to confirm with the county office.
Okay, thank you. Thursday would work better if it's possible, but that's flexible.
I understand.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin, will you take academic, please?
Yes, Mr. President. The academic committee met on November 18th. Mr. DePisa provided an overview to the committee on the progression of the 2021-2022 budget, including the initial meetings with the administrative team. Mr. DePisa provided an update to a personnel matter in the business office. He also discussed the annual building facilities walkthrough that will be submitted to the county office and the ongoing follow-up with the Nutley High School auditorium renovation. Ms. Doyle Moreno and Ms. Vitiello provided long-range projections to the needs of Special Services Department. Dr. Shojja and Mr. Vemeister provided an overview of recommendations for student and staff devices for the next budgeting cycle. Specifics were shared in report form, which will be revisited at the December academic committee meeting. Dr. Shojja and Mr. Vemeister also answered committee questions on current devices and connectivity issues. Mr. Dwyer presented the progress of the social studies program review, including preliminary survey results. Mr. Dwyer reviewed consultant proposals and the results of assessing those proposals based on need. He also provided long-range projections for recommendations that will impact the 2021-22 budget. Dr. Riley presented the notice from the initial review of the Fine and Performing Arts Program, highlighting the need to support the elementary music program. Mr. Bagna discussed the gifted and talented curriculum that will be posted on the website. He also discussed the components of the 2020-2021 mentoring program and the associated manual that is used to support new teacher growth. He also discussed planning for offering the PSAT in-person for 11th grade students in January. PSAT is a qualifying exam for national merit scholarships and provides diagnostic information for students. The district will also look for other dates to offer PSAT to other grade levels, considering student safety. Mr. Bagna highlighted the steps the district is taking to ensure Google Meet classes are conducted safely. Mr. Bagna and Dr. Glazer provided an update to the emergency childcare program and the Right at School progression. NJDOE guidance on childcare was shared with the committee. Mr. Bagna discussed the regression of CUSAC self-assessment component of the process, highlighting the collection of artifacts and evidence, meeting with the county NJDOE office for the second week of December, and submission of local scores to the county office following December board meeting. Mr. Bagna discussed the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with Rutgers University to support the Health Sciences Program at Nutley High School, and he also highlighted the upcoming field trips and PD opportunities. Ms. Molly Cotillo from Yanacaw PTO presented a plan for a donation that would create an outdoor classroom space in Yanacaw Elementary School. Our next academic committee meeting will take place Wednesday, December 16th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dancheck Martin. Mr. Ferraro, can I have a finance committee, please?
Yes, Mr. President. The finance committee met on November 18th. Commissioner Evans attended the finance committee and discussed transitional aid on the township with regard to the award that the township received, the current status of tax collections, and the current financial rates available. Also in attendance was Molly Cotillo from the Yanacaw School PTO, who discussed the outdoor space that they are looking to make a donation for. The committee discussed the logistics of accepting the donation for the specific purpose of that project. And Mr. DePisa will confirm with our auditors and attorney to properly accept and allocate that donation. Mr. DePisa provided the committee with the sample of the budget and committee binders that will be distributed to the finance committee and the entire board. The committee discussed the budget process, the SOP manual, and finance agendas for tonight's meeting. The committee requested that our architect Alexis Goldman attend our next meeting in December to discuss the plan for the tree planting at the Oval, which he previously presented to the committee, which was distributed to the board. Mr. Bagna discussed the CUSAC process with the committee in the initial CUSAC committee meeting and the preparation for the February 9, 2021 CUSAC review. Mr. Perigi discussed the facility checklist that was being completed for CUSAC along with the HVAC repairs at the John Walker Middle School, Lincoln School Gym, and Spring Garden School Gym. Mr. Perigi acknowledged the work that the maintenance grounds and custodians have been doing for the district. Dr. Glazer discussed the potential impact of the new benefit plan that was implemented under the state law as of July 1, 2020. The Superintendents Association is concerned with the financial impact of the migration of employees to the new plan on district revenue. Mr. DePisa will look into a projection based upon the open enrollment, which ended in November 16, 2020. The committee discussed a potential revenue reduction from contributions in October, and that's the purpose of Mr. DePisa looking into that analysis. Our next finance meeting is scheduled for December 15, 2020 at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Mrs. Zaro, can we get an update on the policy committee, please?
Yes, sir. The policy committee met twice, actually, on October 28th and on November 18th. On October 28th, the committee reviewed the policy review chart to identify the policies mandated for review and update. The regulations are mandated by the state. The following policies will be reviewed and discussed pending a November 19th meeting, which has been reserved until November 24th. My apologies, it was because of me. Evaluation of the school bonus administrator, the regulation as the same, job description, curriculum development, affirmative action program for classroom practices, title one responsibility, title one search. Think, not everybody's muted. People's analysis and/or evaluations, gifted and talented pupils, as well as the regulation, instructional supplies, and sexual harassment, as well as the regulations. These are all expected to be on the first reading in December. But on the 18th, the committee did meet to discuss the revised org chart and chain of command, which is on the agenda for tonight. Anybody that did not see it could see it on the agenda for tonight. And the next policy committee will meet Wednesday, December 16th at 7:30. And I wanted to thank Mr. Kozinski.
Thank you very much. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on resolution items only. Our board regulations number 0167, the last 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. And I will remind you again, we are going to be sure tonight to limit the conversations to three minutes maximum. You might be uncomfortable, but there's a lot to be done. Once we're done and you want to say something else, you can do that, but your first statement will be limited to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time on resolution items only. Mr. Vemeister, anyone in the chat room?
Does I get anybody in the chat?
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. Mrs. Dancheck Martin, will you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move academic resolutions 1 through 6 as written.
I need a second. Thank you. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Carnesella? Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Zaro?
Here, yes, sorry.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Administration, Mrs. Scolera, will you take administration, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move administrative resolutions 1 through 4 as written.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Zaro?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Mr. Farrar, will you take finance resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I move finance resolutions one through 11 as written.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin? I'm sorry, discussion. Wait a minute, Dave.
Discussion. Now roll call, my fault.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes, couldn't get off mute.
Ms. Zaro?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Mr. Scolera, will you take personnel resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. Kozinski, I'd like to modify it and move personnel resolutions one and resolution two, which I will read resolution two. Appointment of Beljika Balanta as the Assistant Business Administrator. Be it resolved that the Board of Education appoint Beljika Balanta as the Assistant Business Administrator, effective on or after November 24th, 2020, through June 30th, 2021, with a salary of $96,000 per week. I need resolutions.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes. Sorry.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Zaro?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Mrs. Zaro, will you take policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move policy resolution one as stated.
Second.
Discussion. Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Zaro?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes, thank you. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within that requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions on school-related matters at this time? Mr. V Meister, is there anything in the chat room?
Yeah. Do you have some question?
Hi, Lori Del Tufo, 96 Roda Avenue.
All right, Mrs. Del Tufo, you have to be sure that it's quiet. It's kind of noisy where you seem to be at.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to take my few minutes to play some audio clips from experts in the field. The first that I want to play is from the director of the CDC from November 20th.
Mrs. Del Tufo, I don't mean to cut you off, and I wouldn't do that. I know there's been quite a bit of communications between you and the board members and Dr. Glazer, and I don't mind listening to this again if you'd like to play it for the public. But again, we're going to be limited to three minutes. You'll have to stop after that, and when everyone else is done, you can continue if you'd like to, okay?
I understand, and I knew the three limits online.
Just wanted to make sure you knew the ground rules going in.
I'm pro at this point, no worries.
The truth is, with kids K through 12, one of the safest places they can be, from our perspective, is to remain in school. And it's really important that following the data, making sure we don't make emotional decisions about what to close and what not to close. And I'm here to say clearly, the data strongly supports that K through 12 schools, as well as institutes of higher learning, really are not where we're having our challenges. And it would be counterproductive, from my point of view, from a public health point of view, just in containing the epidemic, if there was an emotional response to say, let's close the schools.
Now, from an interview between Chris Como and Dr. Fauci on November 19th.
Health measures, or whether it's looking at schools and knowing there may be some differences, but you have to have a fundamental principle of schools. And as I told you, my feeling is, and I guess it agrees with you, because you just told me, to the best of your capability, you want to keep the kids in school.
From the seven governors in the Northeast that released a statement on November 19th. Medical research, as well as the data from the northeastern states from across the country and from around the world, make clear that in-person learning is safe when the appropriate protections are in place, even in communities with high transmission rates. In-person learning is the best possible scenario for our children, especially those with special needs and from low-income families. There's also growing evidence that the more time children spend outside of school increases the risk of mental health harm and affects their ability to truly learn.
Mrs. Del Tufo, again, you're limited right now, and I may ask you to please turn it off. I appreciate your input. We're all very much aware of your concerns, which are probably a lot of concerns of the same of us. But if you'll let me continue with our meeting, I will come back to you since you've had your three minutes. Anyone else in the chat room now?
Yes, Matt Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, hello, Matt Brown, 26 Woodland Ave. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I hear you.
Great. So I would like to understand the difference in safety protocols or standards that allow the right at school program to be open and operating in our schools, but not hybrid or in-person learning? Can someone take me through that?
In all due respect, Mr. Brown, I'm sure the superintendent can, but I know through your emails, we've been in constant communications with you, and we feel what you're going through. But I think Dr. Glazer can walk you through it again, if you're okay with that. Dr. Glazer?
Forgive me, but I sent one email and did not get a response from anyone.
I'm sorry?
You mentioned that you had communicated me via email, but I sent one email and did not get a response from anyone.
I did not communicate with you. I said I was aware of your email. It's not my job to communicate with you. Our superintendent or assistant superintendent did do that or should have done that, but I'm sure they'll communicate with you now.
That'd be good, because I did not get a response.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, did you receive the invitation to the virtual parent forum and the flyers that spoke about Right at School?
I did not.
Well, those were sent to the full community, so I apologize that you didn't receive those.
I've really been on top of my email since Monday, when I emailed you, and I have not.
This was last week. The parent forum was the 19th. Regardless. We
This was last Monday that I emailed you.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. Anyway. The buildings are not closed. The district is not closed. I want to make sure that that is very clear. When the students are on virtual instruction, or when the teachers are working remotely, that doesn't mean that the district is closed. Our buildings are open, our principals are in the building, our secretaries, all of our business office, my office, central office. We're still in. So what we are required to do is follow all the health and safety guidelines, right? So capacity, the numbers of people in the building, social distancing, the wearing of the masks, the hand sanitizing or hand washing. And all of those things are things that we're prepared to do. When you have teachers in every single classroom, as well as students, and the capacity continues to be lowered, when we have, as you know, the large numbers of the community out, even when they're not in school, coming and going, it is a challenge, a big challenge, to maintain our health and safety guidelines. When you have a program like Right at School that's providing a service for our families, for our working families and our working staff, you're looking at maybe 20 people, 20 people in that space. They're able to follow those guidelines because you don't have all the other classrooms in use. You don't have all of the other students, right, passing. So the same health and safety guidelines are in place, you just have much less capacity in the buildings. The building is not unsafe. The buildings are not closed.
What is the capacity for Right at School?
So what we've communicated, oh, sorry. Maybe that's, I don't know if that's me or someone else. But what we've communicated at this point is in one space, so say a gym space or cafeteria or cafitorium, depending on which school space, not more than 20 children. They actually break it into two groups of 10 socially distanced. And they have, and I'll make sure that I send this to you again. Again, the PowerPoint and all the information went out. They talked about how they separate groups of children, what the actual footage is, the staff ratio to students, and again, I'll make sure that you receive that.
Okay, and if you could also explain how that differs from, let's say, the hybrid program? You know, I'm trying to compare, I'm trying to make a correlation between Right at School and a hybrid or an in-person program. I just, I haven't seen the brochures, but I fail to understand how a daycare, childcare program can operate in the schools, but hybrid or in-person learning cannot.
I didn't say that it could not. What we're saying currently is that we are on virtual instruction starting Monday. So when the hybrid programs are in the building, you have all of the classrooms full, right? You have staff in each classroom, you have the support staff, you have students in those classrooms. They're passing, they're using the public restrooms. That's a much larger number of people than Right at School, contained into perhaps 20 people in one or two socially-distanced spaces. That's all. I'm not sure that there is a correlation. Again, the buildings are not unsafe. The buildings are not closed.
But I guess I still don't feel answered why we can have daycare, but not hybrid or in-person learning.
Mr. Brown, I think, and again, I thought it was answered, but I think it would serve you better to have direct communications with Mr. Banyu or Dr. Glazer to get those specific answers. I think it would be more helpful to you. I know you sent an email, I know you sent an email. I'm sorry, I know you sent an email, but I think after tonight, Mr. Banyu or Dr. Glazer will definitely get back to you and give you their answer.
And we will forward you the information. It's not that, I guess maybe we're not clear. When you say, why can't you have hybrid, why can't you? The board made a decision for 4,200 students, not 20 students per school.
So just so I understand, and again, I missed the meeting, but the max capacity for Right at School is 20 students per school?
No, she didn't say that. She said each school, each classroom is broken down specifically with the amount of children that are allowed in there. And again, I don't mean to cut you off, but the communications would be a lot clearer when Mr. Banyu or Dr. Glazer get back to you or you speak to them. I think that would be helpful to you.
Okay, I look forward to it.
Thank you. Mrs. Zaro, did you want to say something?
And I don't want this to sound anyway, but I just wanted to say that I know virtual learning is a challenge. It was a challenge for me, especially with my son, because he does have special needs. And I had his parent teacher conference last week, and the report I got was so contrary to what I thought. He's doing so well, and I know this might not be for everybody, and I know that my statement's not for everybody, but I saw the disadvantages, just like everybody else did, and I had the same worries, same concerns as a parent. And I was so pleasantly surprised, to the point where I was brought to tears, about how well he was doing. So I just want everybody to try to look at the optimistic side. I know that some people, and I didn't at first see there was one. I'm challenged with him not having the social aptitude and everything. But he is doing well, so if, I just want everyone to see that there is a brighter side, and there is like, as they say in, you know, Dorothy, and there is the rainbow. I just wanted to say that to everybody, that it's not always about numbers and data, that there are, you know, real parents here that are seeing real things. And I just wanted everyone to know that it is possible, and that there are positive outcomes. And I just wanted to
And I appreciate you speaking up. It's not easy, parents, citizens don't realize that we are parents. Sometimes they don't realize that we are parents, grandparents, and we see the negative and positive sides of every decision that we make as board members. And I've lived through a lot of them, and fortunately, my children are a product of the school system. Now my grandchildren are in the school system. So like Erica, I become emotional over what I'm doing because it benefits 4,200 children, but I know specifically it benefits her child or my grandchildren or whatever it might be. So we appreciate your input. Is there someone else in the chat room right now? I see Grace Kada?
Yes, hi, this is Amy Kada. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, I'm sorry, that's my daughter's account, so my daughter's name is Grace.
That's fine, we've all been there.
I live at 57 Oak Ridge Avenue. And I'm wondering, speaking of data, what data was utilized to come to this decision as far as closing schools down? I did listen to the last meeting, and I did not hear any specific data points. I heard that there was a concern about the holidays. So I'm coming from the perspective of, I'm a mental health professional. My perspective is obviously a holistic perspective, and I believe strongly that our children should be back in school in person. The data, it was very unclear to me in terms of what are we using to predict this out, to kind of predict that things will be sort of an unsafe situation for our children in the school building. So that is one big question I have. The second question is, what can we expect in terms of a return to school date? I felt really sort of taken back in terms of the timing of things, because my fifth grader was in school for one half-day, and then it was communicated that we would be going all virtual. So I would like to know a little bit more about a timeline so that I can prepare my children and myself for kind of what to expect. So I'm just wondering if anyone has any ideas on an actual timeline, given the evidence is saying at this point that in-school learning is preferred. Thank you.
And I appreciate that. Our timeline will be a topic of our discussion from now till our meeting in December 21, when by that time, we will make some type of a decision on what we're going to do as far as coming back to school. We all have the same concerns that you do, and we know that our schools are safe, but the numbers around us continue to climb, which puts a burden on all of us as parents and as administrators and as board members. But Dr. Glazer might have more to add to that, if she would like to? Okay.
All right, I was trying, and all I was saying is, I thought that the board conversation, while open-ended for the return, was pretty clear that we wanted to continue to discuss that of the districts in Essex County that have done the same thing, you needed to be able to look at the different health departments, and that December 21st was your next conversation.
So can I just clarify one more thing? Do I have more time?
Sure.
Thank you. Did the board
Did the Board of Health, does that play into this decision? Or was this purely a decision made by the Board of Ed? I'm just trying to understand that for myself in terms of the shutting back down.
Dr. Glazer.
The Board of Health did not consult with us on the decision to close. Board of Education's decision.
We take input from what's going on throughout the county, throughout the state, and what's going on with the Health Department. But the decision was made by the entire Board of Education to go in the direction that we're going right now. But it'll be reviewed again by our December 21st meeting.
Thank you. And the data was feelings about the potential risk for returning? I'm trying to understand the data.
Well, it's not just feelings, it's numbers, it's actual statistics.
Numbers in our district or numbers in surrounding districts?
It all comes into the picture. The state of New Jersey, if you let me finish, if you let me finish, I could try to explain it to you. The numbers that we look at and the input that we take comes from the state, from the county, and from Nutley, all of them. You're back up, Grace, if you'd like to say something.
Oh, it's Amy.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I feel unsatisfied with that response, but I wanted to at least voice my feelings and my concerns and my question about data. I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chat room right now, Ian? If not...
Well, I want to ask a question directly.
I'm sorry?
Emory Taylor, did you want to ask directly?
I see your statement. I don't know if it's a question, but I appreciate her input unless she wants to make a statement.
All right, so Lori Del Tufo and Matt Brown would both like to speak again.
Okay, Mrs. Del Tufo, you're back up again.
I am. So I know you received my letter, but the reason why I was playing those videos, and unfortunately, I was interrupted quite a bit, so I don't know if everybody on this meet was able to hear it, was because I wanted you to hear from the experts themselves. So my question is, if the CDC, Dr. Fauci, seven governors, with the input of the medical experts throughout the world, all say that children should be in school, even during times of high positivity rates, which the numbers in Nutley are not high compared to the rest of the country, and the CDC continues to recommend that schools do not close. So when will Nutley start making decisions based on data and science rather than abundance of caution?
Mrs. Del Tufo, you know, first of all, you've sent the letter to the state of New Jersey. So that kind of puts us at, I don't know that we can say a lot because of your letter, legal letter that's out there concerning us. But secondly, seven governors and all the discussion that you're talking about, there's just as much discussion from the other side that says we should keep the children at home. So we're doing our best as parents, as grandparents, as board members, to make the right decision for 4,200 children. I hope you appreciate that. We appreciate your input. We are...
I guess I'm just thinking, are the other experts more, higher or better experts than the CDC?
No, I respect Dr. Fauci probably more than most people would appreciate. But I don't think he can make the decision for the township of Nutley, and that's what we are doing.
But he's making recommendations based on data, research, and science. So I do think Nutley can certainly take his recommendations and implement them.
And we do. We take them all into consideration, and we still came up with the decision that we made. Mr. Brown, you're back up on the board, Mr. Brown, if you'd like to.
Uh, yes, thank you. A little bit of an echo of the previous two questions, but I'm trying to understand what data points we're using to decide whether we're hybrid or in-person. New York City, for example, decided they were going to close the schools if they hit a 3% positivity rate. They did hit a 3% positivity rate in the city, and they closed the schools. So what's our metric that we're using? That's what I'm trying to get the answer to.
Dr. Glazer, please.
I honestly don't have an answer for you at this moment. We're not New York City. We have a county health officer, we have a public health nurse that works with us with each positive case, with each time we have to quarantine. We work with the New Jersey Department of Health and the New Jersey Department of Education on all of our guidance. And of course, our policy, as you know, I'm sure, does follow the CDC guidelines and considerations. We're in a place right now, Mr. Brown, where Nutley has 898 positive cases. That is up over 100 cases just since last week, including within our schools. So that science and data, I don't know, conflates to New York City, but for Nutley and for our township and this Board of Education's making their decisions, that all counts as data.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chat room now, Ian?
Yes, Anita Cucul, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher the name, but Cucul.
Coca-Hattis. I'm going to say Coca-Hattis, but I'm sure she'll clarify for us. I'm going to call you Anita. Anita, do you have something?
Hi, how are you? Hi, Charlie. You mentioned you're listening to other experts besides the governor, the CDC, Dr. Fauci. So can you just let me know who the other experts are?
Well, the governor, I would not consider the governor an expert personally, but that's me personally. But certainly, our local county officials, our local Health Department, the numbers in Nutley, as Dr. Glazer just mentioned. And we have teachers, we have students that are dealing with this virus. We look at what's best for Nutley on the local issue. I can't, I don't like when people say, "New York did this," or some... I really don't care what someone else does in New York City. Nutley has to take care of itself, and that's what we're trying to do. The board makes its decisions based on input from state, county, and Nutley officials.
Okay, another question, thank you. I've contacted our Health Department requesting detail on our cases, and they actually do not have that detail to provide to anyone.
First, first place...
Excuse me, let me finish. They only have number of cases and death amounts. That is the only detail they have on COVID cases in our town.
And that's the way it should be.
This is very insufficient data to make such huge decisions for all the children in this district with such minimal data from our town.
I disagree with you. That's not minimal data. It's data that you're...
It's absolutely minimal. It really doesn't really say anything.
And again, that's your opinion, okay? My opinion is... No, that's...
You guys are making major life decisions with minimal data and a lot of feelings.
800 and some odd people is not minimal information in my mind. I don't need to know the person's name, I don't need to know their age, I don't need to know anything about them. All I need to know is that 800 and some odd people in Nutley have the, are dealing with the situation. That's enough fact for me. Thank you. Mrs. Arrow. I'll get, I'm sorry, I'll get back to you if you don't mind, Mrs. Arrow.
No, I just wanted to say that sometimes, you also understand that the CDC and the Health Department, the guidelines are very specific, and sometimes the date that somebody may have tested positive does not exactly correlate to the date that somebody else did. And those things are not always made public. And even us as board members are not apprised to the specific information. But there's trends that we see, right? And there's other information that we see. So you have to understand that you might be seeing, not all health information is public. And even if it is, if it's not pertinent to the previous person, if there's not contact tracing, and there's so much detailed information that not even I understand all the time. I have to have it explained to me sometimes, and trust me, I agree with that. Sometimes there's just things that, and this is, it's a fluid situation, right? So if one thing happens and one happens, it might not always be available to the public, or you might not always be able to see it. But you have to understand that there's things there that we see or trends that we might see that might not be available to everybody. But everybody is always looking at the best interest of everybody involved, whether it be the kids, teachers, the court staff, everybody, right? We're all people, and we're all that are in this situation. So those things have to be looked into consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrow. Is there anyone else in the chat room, Ian?
Yes, Emmanuel Butler.
Mrs. Butler or Mr. Butler? Emmanuel Butler? All right, next, Ian.
I don't believe there are any additional people with new questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any old business to come before the board?
Somebody raised their hand in the chat, Charlie, I'm sorry.
Erica, is there any old business to come before the board? Is there any new business to come before the board? I move for the German.
No. Can I say something?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Yes, I've been asking for quite a while. Yes, ma'am, you can.
I was just trying to say, somebody mentioned my hand being raised.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't see from my end, but I apologize. Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to every single one of you on this board meeting. I cannot imagine having to make these difficult decisions. And I agree with all of you. I do not want my kids back in school anytime soon until I see zero numbers in town. That's my personal opinion. And yes, it's hardship for me and many other family and friends that I have. But I appreciate every single decision that you take to make Nutley safe. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I appreciate my board members. Before we close, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, be a safe Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family, because that's, besides us, that's all that matters. We went all business, new business. I'll hear from the German, please.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Good night.